All right, good morning, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting of the Customs and Securities Board of Directors to order Monday, April 8th. Public comments. Mr. Mosher, you have indicated number two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time on any items before us? We've seen no one. Then we'll go to item two, the 290 Colorino Avenue budget.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So what I have before you are seven recommendations for you to consider today. Instead of, I have a presentation for you, and instead of going through that presentation and then boom, put these seven recommendations up on the screen for you, I'm gonna, we're gonna go slowly, because there's some, these are some big decisions for you.
Good.
So, so we're gonna go nice and slow and take each recommendation one at a time, and then see what takes us or goes. Now, can you hit the lights and then also the video too, so they can see this? All right, so, so, as you know, the board directed staff to obtain some preliminary estimates to form tenant improvements on the building at 290 Colorino. And these are some improvements where we're gonna ask for our courtesy bids from a couple of contractors, this is what we asked, we asked for. On the exterior side, we asked for a drop tolerant landscaping all along here, it's grass right now, so it's suggested to tear it out, put drop tolerant landscaping. If you, if you went to the neighbors next to them, you'll notice that they have no grass, it's all, it's all drop tolerant, so to make the assistant, that was a suggestion. Also, put a rotting gate right here, so we can, the, the, we move the vault, the confluence vehicle over it and make it secured, and then also put a gate here to make, make the car secured. AD improvements around the front door, charging station, we put a charging station for the vault, flagpole, monument sign has to be redone. Also, put exterior lighting around the parking lot, painting the building in a bike rack. That's on the exterior side. On the interior side, it's, it's quite extensive.
Can I interrupt you just for a minute?
Absolutely.
On the, the exterior, what about windows? Remember, some of those windows were...
Yes, that's later in the presentation, that's part, that's part of the inspection repairs.
Okay.
So we have that in here, too. Yes, yes, thank you. So the, on the interior side, this is what, this is the current format is right now, this is proposed. So we would demo these three offices right here, make this into a nice community room. We would install a, a wall right here, be a backdrop for the dais, and then enough seating room for, estimate about thirty people. This area here, we'd create a new office for an EOC, knock off a couple of walls here, make a hallway down here, create a permits office. The lobby in here will be secured, so we'll have doors all around here to protect, for staff protection, and then it'll be like key locks, you know, key, keypad stuff, so staff can access HQ. The bathrooms all have to be AD compliance. Other improvements was new flooring and carpets, painting the interior walls, kitchen cabinets and tops. Also, T-bar ceilings, energy efficient lighting, exhaust hood for the stove. And then, the, one of the, the contractors noticed that a, a new HVAC system be placed over the community room. If we're gonna have, if the anticipation to have up to thirty people, we need to make sure there's enough air in, in that room. Now, you know, there's, there's already eleven HVACs in, in that room, so hopefully, maybe we can relocate one of them, instead of buying a new one. But what their suggestion is definitely have to have an HVAC above that room.
You can rezone them, too, you know, with the, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. But in their proposal, they, they, they put in a purchase of a new HVAC system.
Is there somewhere where the dais's cost is broken out?
I, I, I do have a cost with that, that, that is, yes. So we went and obtained two contractors that performed this kind of work, and these are, these were their proposals, and you see, they're pretty close. They were all prevailing wages. So we believe, and you'll see, these estimates are in your, your staff report, so we believe these numbers are really good numbers to go by. We looked at cuts. Obviously, the big item on here is the landscaping, so that's one area we can cut. We can, we can hold off moving the vault over, so we don't have to, if you don't want to, we don't, we don't have to put the iron fence up. You know, that also means a charging station. Now, on here, I don't have the dais, but if you wanna cut the dais, that's $25,000. Do you want to include that as well?
I want to cut it.
I do, too. All right. Well, I think we need to have a discussion.
Yeah, I think too.
Well, no, we should have a discussion, I'm just telling you, I'm not voting.
That's two.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm voting the opposite.
So am I, so we, that's two against one, you know, so.
It seems like a fighting dais here.
Oh, that's right.
You know, can I throw you a curve ball? I hate to keep interrupting here, but it, it occurred to me that we have, we do have still an excess of...
Small offices, is that right?
Uh, vacant offices?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we would.
When I was on the school board, you know, they went into that new facility, and they created a small, little office for all the board members. You know, just one office for, we all, when we came in, we'd share it, you know. I, I think that if it doesn't cost, you know, if we can avoid any, you know, cost on a thing or minimize it, that might be a good thing for us to have at our disposal.
Do you remember, we had one up here? We had one office, this is back...
Well, yeah, vaguely, yeah.
And we had one office that we could come into.
But we outgrew, we outgrew the building, so...
Sure, we could definitely do that.
But...
You know, if it's sitting there...
It's a good idea, Jim.
You know.
Yeah, not a problem.
Why not do it?
Absolutely. So moving on, so total, if you include these costs, 224,000 grand total, and you put the dais in there, you're talking about 250,000 in, in cuts. And then, if you take in consideration of the bid process, you know, obviously, we wouldn't have to go out to bid for the construction part of the TI's, you can fairly estimate during the bidding process, you can save another ten percent. So what I did, I took ten percent off the lowest bid that came in. So potential savings is 334,000. And then, if you put a contingency, ten percent, you're looking at 845,000. So that's, that's one option for you to include in cuts.
Who gave you that, that information? I mean, why do you estimate the ten percent savings in the bid process?
Because, well, again, I can tell you, talking with Transitions, in their experience on bidding, product on biddings, it's usually about ten percent.
So they're, they've estimated it conservative?
Yes. Next, I wanna talk about the furniture fixtures and equipment, and that is all the nuts and bolts going on to moving into the new facility, you know, taking all the equipment and furniture we have here, moving into the new facility. As I mentioned, there's a lot of nuts and bolts to that, it's not as simple as, as you might think. So we went and hired Transitions, and then we met them, it's Chris Tucker and Mary Bradley are here, representing Transitions. They have over thirty years of experience providing business relocation, planning move, move management services. So we entered a contract with them for less than 4,000. And on February 29th, we did a kickoff meeting with, with Chris and, and Mary, and it was all staff here at HQ, we all sat around this table, and we talked about, you know, our operations, our goals, our needs and expectations. From that kickoff meeting, Transitions created this, what's called executive gotcha, which is attachment B in your, in your staff report. And that explains the goals, the objectives, the timing, concerns, and hesitation absolutes. And it looks like this, you probably saw that in your, in the package.
Yeah.
So based on that information, and Transition went ahead and obtained a cost for the furniture fixture and equipment. And these are, these are costs for the physical relocation, putting up audiovisual equipment for board meetings, security systems, other computers, local area networks, all the nuts and bolts and goals in moving into a new building. And these are hard costs, Mary actually went in, they have a, Transitions has a network of vendors that they work with, and so Mary went out and contacted these vendors and got some hard costs. And their estimate is gonna be 302,000, and you can see that estimate in your staff report, it's an attachment C. So we looked at making some cuts on this area as well. And right off the bat, the UPS system, the unerected power system, and that was, instead of bringing a generator to the building, suggestion was bring a UPS, so if there's a power outage, it would give our staff enough time to bring a mobile generator to the, to the building to hook up the, the building. Originally, we're, we're, we're gonna go for a UPS, five hours, gives us five hours leeway time. After talking to the staff, they said they can, we can definitely do it in three hours, and as you can see, if you get a, the UPS with three hour system, it saves us 93,000. So we put that on, on the list. They had several TVs on there, you know, TVs in, in the break room, the EOC room, the boardroom. We already have two existing TVs here, and we could also go a smaller size, a fifty-inch TV instead of like a seventy-inch TV, and that'll save us about 15,000. The furniture in, in the general manager's office, the, the existing furniture, we did reach out to the tenants, they argued that they'd sell us that furniture for 4,500. As you might recall, there was a conference table in there as well, but they're gonna take the chairs, so we still need to purchase the chairs for that.
Some of the chairs.
If you want to, now, granted, the tenant's out of the building right now, and they did leave furniture there. But if you don't wanna use, buy the furniture, you can use the existing furniture I have in my office, that's, that's another option.
So that's 4,500 for all of the furniture that they left?
Yes, well, all the furniture in, in the GM's office, that area, not in the whole building, just in the GM's office.
Do they need additional furniture within the building besides the general manager's office?
I believe that's, is it all out there?
Yeah, but we're gonna have to purchase furniture for the town hall meeting room, the, the majority of the furniture here is going to go relocate and fit into all the offices.
I don't think she heard you.
Sorry.
The existing furniture at, at the building, is it, is it gone?
Yes, the only one that's left is your office.
Okay.
Are they out?
Sorry.
Yes, they are, they're, they're out. Yes. So other expenditure costs, lobby furniture, you know, you just, you know, I think we have some existing chairs we can use. The monument sign, we took out because there's already, that was already in the TI's. Then there's artwork branding and patio tables, so a total of 47,000, we identified it as potential cuts on the FFMEs. So if you include...
On your GM furniture there, what is included in the 7,700?
Includes the, the desk, file cabinets, there is a, the couches, the tables, conference table, conference chair, table, there's also, what do they call it, other file cabinets, so...
So everything but the, those leather chairs?
And leather chairs are there, too, yeah, leather chairs, yeah.
They are? Oh, I thought we had to purchase them.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, that's part of the...
That's part of it?
Yeah.
That's pretty high, 4,500.
Yeah, I think that's good. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Here's a picture of their office.
Yes.
Can we look at that?
Let their purchases in.
Yeah. 7,700.
So if you include, with the cuts, if you include the contingency budget at ten percent, we're looking at 280,000.
Go back to that one again?
Yes.
You do.
This one or the next one?
No, that one.
Okay. Questions?
Just wanted to provide clarity, that's for the furniture that exists in the general manager's office now.
Right.
That's the 4,500 dollar purchase that she's looking at.
Right, right. Thank you.
So is that contingency, a for sure thing, or just a potential, the 25,000?
That's just, that's just potential, because it's just like in case something we didn't foresee, or something, like a change orders, that's all that, that is. Will you do that for a lot of our current, our projects, just?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a little bit different.
Okay. So then there's other costs associated with that, and that is what we call other budget, and that is, you know, the final design and engineering, so we get, you know, you still gotta go through the, the plan process with, with the city. There's asbestos removal, and then, this is Director Fairman, so he's talking about the windows, the other inspection, this is from the inspection reports, the window work. So that includes that 37,000. The 20,000 is cost that we already incurred, that's like the asbestos survey, that's the inspections, report, transitions costs, perimeter designs, that's where the costs are already incurred, 20,000. And the project manager, that's Transitions, which I'll go into more details on what, what they provide, so that's a total of 168,000. So we all add it all together, the tenant improvements, the fixture, the fixture furniture and equipment, and other budget, and we look at everything as what was presented, total original estimates, 1.7 million. If you wanna use the cuts that we suggested, then it's 1.3 million, so the difference about Then you add that with the purchasing of the building, this is the total cost you're looking at, about 5.5 million or 5 million, depending which, which you wanna talk about. And this is where we're, and this is, now, this is the time where we're open up for questions, discussions, because after that, then I'd like to have the board make a decision on the first two recommendations, so open up for discussions and questions.
Questions for staff?
Maybe we should talk about the dais, because that's 25,000, because that could knock off a little bit more if that's a question to go.
I think it's important to have that, because we're moving in somewhere, every single agency that I know has some kind of dais.
Orange County, San Francisco, they took it away on purpose.
Yeah.
Well, they're an exception.
I think that they're...
Well, no, they, they have a dais for speakers, but...
Well, they have a, okay, what they have is podium.
How many directors are on the Orange County?
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-five person dais is a lot, more imposing, a lot.
They never had twenty-five person dais.
No. But what I'm saying is, if you're working about a five person dais, it's a force of 25.
We're talking about seven or eight, or 10, or however many other people sit up there with us.
Well, no, no, there'd be five people sitting there.
I didn't think you'd like to figure it that way.
It'd just be five, the staff would sit, the staff would sit in separate tables, just before.
Right, right.
I make a recommendation, do not have a dais. I, I think it's important, I think the only thing that dais is serves is politicians' ego.
It doesn't serve my ego.
No, I don't think it does.
For, for me, what it is, is the ability, like, right now, if I have to talk to someone in the audience, I mean, to me, a public agency should have the ability to see everybody who's talking to them. I mean, we don't have that here. This is very uncap, I, I have people that have said they wanted to come speak to us, whether they do or not, I, it's just what they're saying. They won't come here because this room is crowded, they can't see us. To me, a dais is important, and it doesn't have to be some big imposing thing like they have at City Hall.
No.
It could be some kind of raised platform, where at least, you know, we're, we're looking down and talk, not looking down, that's wrong, we're looking at staff, and we're looking at the general public. And there, we, you know, we've decided to use this room as a, a bigger use, to let the community use it, and I think there's community groups that need that ability to sit and face their audience.
I think, a suggestion, you know, Irvine Ranch Water District's dais is, is a nice one, if you've never, if you went to that, it's, it's leveled, it's, it's just right on the floor level, it's not raised or anything, it's just one level.
What was the design of the one that you put in for 25,000, what was the design?
It was, it was kinda like a semi, semi arch, kinda, for, for five board members that had, like, a granite top on it, or with abilities to connect your iPad or your power, your, your technology. That's all it really was, just for five board members, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I feel the way Bob was personally.
Well, it's a community room, it's just, it's a waste of space for the community room.
It's, it's set up kinda like what Mesa Water's set up, where Mesa Water has a multi, that's, that's how I envisioned it. It was like Mesa Water, they have their, their small dais in the back, and their room is big enough to have a community room, and that's the way, that's how I envisioned it.
Yeah, and have your staff right in front of it.
Right, or on the side.
Or just sitting out in the middle.
We, we could do a central dais, like a, like a hot ring in the middle, is that what you were envisioning, something like that?
Give you a pair of...
One of the benefits of a dais, a permanent structure, is that the sound system is all in the dais, and so we don't have to do the microphones, and our equipment will be a little better, and that people will be able to speak when they push the button, as opposed to walking around mic'd in the entire time. That's one of the nice things, and for that standpoint, also, the, the podium for speakers will be mic'd as well, and we won't have to go through all this.
It's more professional.
Yeah, that's the way I feel, you know. I mean, instead of just having somebody come in...
Let's go vote, I mean...
Go, I'm gonna take comment probably, go, go ahead.
The di- the dais has not been designed yet, it's been merely a line drawing shown to a couple of sources to ask them to price it. So when you get into having a detailed drawing of the dais, as well as the materials, and exactly what goes into it, and bidding it with the subcontractors, it could go down. And so I think 25,000 is on the high end of the range, and it's, so that's one of the things that we do for you.
No, I just, she answered my question, okay. I just, you know, I'm just not the type of guy.
It could cost, it could cost as little as 15,000, but when we're talking about the design, the shape and the layout has been established, some hard surface has been established. There's a lot of other attention to details that could drive the cost up, so we used the larger number of the two, and the lower number was fifteen or something like that?
Fifteen or eighteen.
Eighteen thousand, so there is the potential for it to be value engineered down, so it's a little bit more generic and not flashy for political, you know, posturing or things like that. And that's the, you give us that direction, and we follow it, whichever way you want.
I think it's a given, you know, that they expect, if we're moving, people wanna come, and they wanna be able to see a dais, and walk up and pop. I think it's professional, like you're saying.
You know, I belong to, I'm on that Borders Committee, the Mexico thing, and they...
They have a big twenty-five member board as well. But they, they use, and I thought this is, I thought it was gonna be mandated, but maybe it isn't, the method, electronic method of voting. He'll, he'll bring the subject up, he'll say, okay, now is the time to vote, and, and then it's all recorded on there. Is that... Required now, or no?
No, but we put that in, in, in our TI improvements, if that's something you wanna do, you do that much more.
I think it's important that the public in the audience be able to see how each one of them votes.
Yeah, we put that in budget.
And they just installed that down there.
It's like city councils do that.
Yeah.
Alan, are we, this is a regular scheduled meeting, or a pleasure meeting? We can make motions and make decisions this morning?
Well, I think you can give direction, I think they, they are looking for your input on that, so I think Scott's gonna bring something back to you after this direction on that, so...
No.
Well, no, I think he wants...
We need, we need directions.
Before I, any other, any other questions for staff, or any, as we do remember the public wants to speak? So, audience, please.
They can't do that, though?
Yeah.
Thank you, President Schaper, my name is Jim Mosher, I'm a, I'm a super right there in the district. Among the comments I didn't wanna make, without, without a dais, I have no strong feeling about that, but from having attended a lot of public meetings, I think the most important thing is the seating arrangement, whether it's a dais or the seats laid out in the room distinguishes who are the decision makers, the board, from who are the staff people and from who are the audience. When a, a board or something meets in a room and the members are mingled with the public, it gets very confusing for those who have not been before. So I think that's the most important thing, to have a separate area for the board, so they're easily distinguished. Among the comments I intended to make, first one, in future discussion of this, I would change the name tenant improvements to facility improvements. The word tenant very strongly implies that somebody is renting, either that the district is gonna be renting the building, or renting it to someone. The second point I wanted to make is, the staff report, a few pages in, for the first time brings in to start the contrast what the district expects to get from this building, 1.1 million, and what it's expecting to spend to acquire the new building, 3.75 million. If you're a homeowner, usually when you move from one home to another, you kind of have comparable prices, so maybe upgrading a little bit, going from 1.1 to 3.75 is gonna strike the public, it's quite an improvement in lifestyle, moving up a great deal, three to four times what you're expecting for this building. Specifically regarding this agenda item, the cuts, I thought the staff report was not very clear, and perhaps it's more clear to the board than I am, when it says that something is being cut by a certain number of dollars, whether that means that item is being totally eliminated, or that is a reduction from some previous estimate. For instance, it says you're gonna eliminate the exterior painting of the building, is that a reduction in dollars from what you were going to spend, or it means you're not gonna paint anything at all? I think that could be clarified with the public and board. And then finally, the Transitions Company, I'm sure is very competent for what they do, and it is emphasizing their literature, they're gonna be taking bids on all the different things to make sure it's done as cost effectively as possible, but I think I read somewhere in the staff reports, that they themselves were selected without a bidding process. And they have the two contracts here, one for the construction management of the facility improvements, and the other for the move management, and I would suspect they're not the only business, however competent they are, that does this, so I'm wondering a little more how they were selected, and whether the 41,000 that the district will be paying them is competitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you need some direction on where to go with it?
Yes, I, I... Well, did you want to take action on the dais, because this is gonna be contentious issue, and then, and then I need some directions on items, recommendations of one and two.
Well, I think the sentiment, the majority would go with the dais, if I understand correctly?
I'm, I'm in favor.
All sit there.
I bet, I bet you won't even say a word, will you?
I would put you out of bed.
I would be opposed myself.
I'm opposed.
Yeah, I've said by the majority, I mean, do I need to take a formal vote on this?
I think as long as you've expressed your opinion, and it's required, then you don't need to do anything further.
So, and then, so I, my recommendation number one is, you got a couple estimates here, you can go for the whole enchilada, 5.5 million, or you can go with the suggested cuts, and as Mr. Mosher mentioned, if you go with such cuts, I mean, we won't do it, which is basically what it is.
I think the answer to his question is, we just don't, those items aren't being reduced, they're just not being done.
Right, not gonna be done. Whatever suggestion, whatever decision you make, whether it's the, the original estimate or the estimate with the cuts, I do wanna assure the board that staff, Wendy Mark and myself, we've come up with a funding plan, there's three options, any of those three options are gonna work for both these estimates, so whichever you wanna go.
What, what about the exterior painting? I mean, I, I...
I haven't been inside the place, so I know that we're gonna have to do some interior painting, but the exterior, look to me like it, you'd probably stand...
Yeah, we, we, that was one of the items that was cut, the exterior painting, because we thought it looked fine.
It'll be done sometime.
Yeah, exactly, we just like it properly, correct.
And what about the bike rack?
I, I think that's good to promote other means of transportation.
For Mr. Mosher?
Uh, Mr. Mosher and everyone else, transportation.
We'd have a couple of board members that bike, you know.
Yes. Promoting, promoting steam. I skateboard myself.
And my boat, I'm riding my boat.
Grind. I've gotta convince my chauffeur to get me over to that side.
Yeah.
Well, are you saying putting the bike, bike rack back in?
It's already in there.
It's there?
Well, I think it's there.
It's still there.
What we're looking at is...
How much is it?
One of the, one or two of these.
Yeah, what I was just, one or the other, I mean, I mean, we can go about each item, it'll take us forever, if you're gonna cut every, you know, every line number, I think, well, we, if, if you're uncomfortable with 5.5 million, I think staff came up with some, some good suggestions on where we can cut and save another 500,000. If, if you're uncomfortable going with 5.5, then, then go with the estimated cuts, but I need a decision on which one you want. Do you want 1.7 or 1.3 for all this?
I'll just throw my thoughts out there, this building's for the future, and I think one of the concerns that Mr. Mosher brought up was, we have to explain to the public how we're going from a building that's worth 1. whatever, to a building that's worth four, you know, just random numbers. We are making a quantum leap in terms of facilities, to go from this building to that building is a quantum leap, and it, for the future of the district, to me, we can nickel and dime and cut things out of this budget all we want. We're gonna be over 5 million regardless of which way we go. To me, it's worth going to the highest amount to get this building, the way it needs, this new building, the way it needs to be for a long, long time. I'm afraid that if we, if we lowball it, shortcut ourselves, and go with that lower estimate, that in five years, we're going to go. That, that hundred thousand dollar item that we wanted to put in, in 2016, is now costing us three hundred thousand dollars. To me, I, I think we go for the whole thing, get it done, and, and based on what I've looked at, and, and I've talked to Scott pretty extensively over this stuff. I think going with that, the highest amount, to get to where we need to be is what the district ought to do. Again, we're over five million dollars, and it's a hard, just a hard pill to swallow after all of our discussions, but I think we should do the whole thing, our legal.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, for the simple reason that we knew going in, there was going to be this kind of price, one way or the other. We just didn't have a handle on what the price would be, because we didn't have the, all the terminology that went with it and all the different lists. But I think, you know, in the long run, we're completely right in going forward. Because it's a hard sell to turn around and try to nickel and dime something later on when it's going to go nothing but up, just like houses or anything, so, yeah. I completely agree with that.
I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because I think some of these things can, can wait for a year and.
We can have a little line item fund that would be dedicated towards the eventual implementation of some of these things. Some of them aren't, aren't living, you know, you're not going to live and die on them.
I, I understand what you're saying, and, but, you know, half a million is a half a million, and.
It's a lot of money. And, you know, we are taking a quantum leap, and, you know, I, I kind of like, personally, I, I kind of like to edge my bet a little bit here, but that's just how I feel.
Just, I, I, I understand completely that some of the maintenance items are things that could be deferred. What I'm talking about is more the technology stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want to get into the technology stuff, because that's where we're going to get dead in the future. They call that the technology stuff, it's not included in the half point three.
Well, I completely agree with Jim. I've delayed this meeting a month if we could get it down to four and above, four million dollars. I'm dismayed partly because when we started off with this building. We were talking about a quarter of a million dollars worth of improvements. And then, 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 then I heard Wendy and others talk about half a million dollars worth of improvements. And now we're up to one point three million dollars worth of improvements. It's dismaying that we could have been so far off when we were thinking about purchasing this building, you know, with the improvement numbers. You know, so I'm, respectfully, I, you know, I have a hard time swallowing even having one point three million dollars of improvements.
Can I interject something here? Part of the reason for that is the market itself. There, there, there is not an inventory out there, am I right, Jack?
That's correct.
I mean, ideally, we would never have purchased an eleven thousand square foot building. We didn't need that much space. But with the availability of inventory in this market, you've got to take what you can get, pretty much. And I'm sorry it's that way, but that's the way it is. And if you're going to, if you're going to buy a building that big, you got, you got to outfit it properly, or somewhat properly. So, I mean, tagging on to what you're saying, you know.
Okay, I'm, you know, I, I'll be voting for the lower price. And, you know, I would hope that, you know, turned it with even a lower price.
When I saw these figures, I was in shell shock like Bob, because I remember five hundred thousand being my max, and then it would be seven, one point seven. So I, I'm in favor of the lower price, agreeing with Jim and Bob. And like you say, if you want to improve it, then line, line edge to there.
I just wanted to explain the one point one million for this building. That is staff's estimate of a very conservative number that we would walk away with. That is not what we would sell the building for.
Yeah.
We just felt like, you know, we want to be, for financing purposes, conservative. And that amount to walk away, that covers the cost that we originally bought this building for, plus all the improvements. So that was kind of how we covered that thing.
I knew, I knew that was a loan.
Okay.
You know, I would not be accepting one point one myself, but that's just me.
Thank you for your direction.
So, can we take a, for our action then, on number one?
Why don't I make a motion when we go with the estimate with cuts?
So you're saying, so the motion is for, for number one.
Can we decide that we want to do it that way, in a special meeting? I mean, it's why.
Yeah, we're listed, we're listed, we're okay to make an action, take an action.
So the, the motion is for the one, one, one point, one million two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars for approval, for TI. That's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed with the lower, with, with the cuts. In a second, any other discussion on that? But I'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed. So that motion carries.
I didn't say I, I meant the vote, I didn't realize.
That far along.
I, I think it was pretty obvious, so then that motion carries.
And what you did was you just set the budget, you didn't award any contracts.
Right, no, just set the budget.
That's a max.
And I, and I think that takes you to item number two, which I think, well, I'd like to have an action too. Mr. President, Board Director, since obviously, you're going to, I'm assuming you're going to approve a budget of five million four three thousand dollars. So I can get it.
But you listed from unreserved retained earnings and wastewater, so we haven't just talked about that yet. I mean, that's number two, is that?
Right, that's, that.
Well, that's the overall budget.
We got three options, and we're going to.
Yeah, we're going to try, we'll talk, talk about the funding.
Where we need to be, but.
But this is, but I need, you need a board approval of the budget, and then I'm going to show you the three options you have to fund that.
It's a funded, okay. Okay, so that's number two.
That's number two, so I need action. Yeah, I need action number two.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I.
So I need, I need a motion.
I would move that number.
So five million four three thousand?
Second. Motion is second, any other discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries four to one.
Thank you, thank you, Ford. All right, so let me go, now let me go back, lights and. Yes, I'm going to talk about your options now, to fund the, the five million dollars. So you have three, three options. The first option is to fund it totally with the existing funds that we have. And how that works is, as you know, we have three million seven hundred sixty thousand dollars in project one oh one, West Side Pump Station abandonment project. As you know, O C S D, Orange County San Diego Districts, they have underestimated their cost, the cost of their portion substantially. I mean, it was originally about fourteen million, now it's going to be twenty-six million dollars. So they're going to talk about that increase in upcoming meeting in May, on the operations committee. And assuming the committee approves it, and then ultimately the board approves it, they're particularly going to begin that project in 2023.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got that date on. I talked to Rob Thompson this morning, 2023 is when the project will be completed.
Okay, so.
It'll start in 2021.
Twenty twenty-one, okay. So that's five years, five years now. So you have three hundred, so our position is, you got a project that's not going to start in another five years. You're sitting on a four million dollars, it's, it's not fiscally responsible to sit on that money and, and just hold on to it. As you know, there's a lot of agencies looking at special districts, whether they're hoarding money, holding on to it. So we think it's, it's fiscally responsible to use that money now for the purchase of the, the building. And then we can come back later with the funding options to fund project one oh one. And then you use fixture fees, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which we have, and then also the sale of this building, as Wendy mentioned, this is the, this is a very conservative estimate, this is the money we, in our pocket, one point one. That gives you five point six million dollars, that's plenty of money, you just, you just proved five million dollars, so, so five point six, you have plenty of money in the bank right now to, to fund this project as is.
I need to comment on that.
Sure.
I think it's fiscally irresponsible for us to take the money that we've told the public is set aside for a particular project, irrespective of it being delayed. You know, there's many, many, many documents and meetings and things, agenda reports, that say that money was set aside for that purpose. And I'm not taking that money, you know.
I get me in agreement with Bob. I didn't, we never talked about it, but I, that money is specifically for project one oh one.
I mean, it's a sinking fund, we have, we've always had sinking funds, and we put them to good use.
Well, the option, like I said, the good news is that, and again, assuming they approve the project, you know, there's a possibility they might not approve, but assuming they approve it, you know, we still got five years from now to, to raise that money again.
I know, but you're talking over a million dollars a year.
We're talking about one, two million dollars a year.
Almost two million bucks a year, and that's a lot.
Well, there's different ways.
There's other, there are other ways to offer. There are other options coming, right? This is just one option, so I would be opposed to this.
You can finance or buy a lot of bonders.
You know, depending on what happens at the O C S D meeting, we could actually go ahead with this, not finance this building. Set up a plan to accumulate funds again, because it's just a budget, it's an appropriation. Accumulate funds, and then if we wanted to at any time in the future, we could finance the new building, you know, and pay ourselves back for that.
Sure.
So there's, you know, there's options that we didn't even present here, we weren't aware, we understood that the new building would, or the new project may or may not go by 2023.
But on interest rates, probably going to be increasing within the next year. So if we, if we funded it through the loan, that'd be a lower interest rate, I would think.
I think you're right, I don't, I don't think it's going to go up too dramatically, but it is going to edge out a little bit. And if we're going to finance it, probably now would be the time to.
And that, at least with this, option number two is financing. And what you, obviously, we're looking at the estimate with cuts of five, five million four three thousand. You use your, your fixture fees, and now, and now give you a four point three million dollars to finance. And then the suggestion is the, the sale of the headquarters would use that to pay the lease payment for, for three to five years. And then option number three, so you have a little different approach, is that you would use the sale of this building, along with fixture fees. Pay that towards the, the purchase of the, of the five million dollars. And then your lease, the lease amount is, is low, it's three point one, so it's, it's, means your, your payments can be less. And then the fund, and then the, when you, when we sell the headquarters, this building, that fund will be put back into the reserves. So that's another, it's a, it's a, kind of a hybrid approach of, of financing using your reserves. So, so those are three options. Our recommendation was option number one, with what I'm hearing from a couple of board members, that they don't like this option, but that's our option, is option number one, because the money is there. And then we could fund project one oh one later. You could also, you could also finance project one oh one, that's another option. But that's our recommendation is option one, so we need, we need directions from the board, which option you want, one, two, or three?
Did you go over those again?
Which, which one?
All three, well, I, I understand the first one.
Okay, second one. So the second one is, we're looking, we're, we're just looking, you know, we're just looking at this side right here.
Just using the fixture fees.
We're just using the fixture fees. So you're going to finance four point three million dollars, okay? And then you're going to use the sale of this building as a lease payments for the three to five years.
Under that option, Scott, if, if we were to take, we have the four point three to finance and finance corp. And within the next six months, O C S D comes back and says, you know, we're not going to do the project for. We could then take the money that's being set aside, because the project isn't going to be done or its way out and pay off the finance corp.
Not for seven years. See, staff is concerned that, that we lock ourselves into financing because of this project, and that O C S D could walk away at any time. You know, that we would be stuck if they decide that it's too difficult to drill underneath, or whatever. Then we would be stuck with this ton of money that we can't do anything with for seven years. That's staff's concern, I, I'd like to use the money that we've accumulated, that's my preference. And then if we couldn't set aside enough, we could always, like I said, refinance, you know, finance the building and pay ourselves back, or finance that project, when we know a realistic cost for it.
We could use finance corp to finance the project.
Yes.
Yes, you could.
Will they do it for a project like that? Why don't you look at option three again? I was thinking that whatever we get from the sale of the property, it could be a loan.
That's what I'm thinking.
We pay that upfront, and then reimburse the, our sinking.
On a temporary basis.
On a temporary basis, we can do that, can't we?
I'm sorry.
We loan ourselves one point one plus million.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. It's going to come out of reserves, and then we'll just replenish reserves.
Yeah.
Whereas the, the option two is where we, that money is just specifically appropriated to pay, like, the lease payments over the next few years. So it's kind of like we pre-funded our lease payments. This is where it just goes into reserves, and we just budget year by year.
Yeah.
Can I ask a market question? Mark, if you were in our position, since you're a finance guy, what direction would you go?
I would end up going with option two, financing the whole thing. Less the fixture fees, I would use all the fixture fees first, and use all the restricted money, and then finance the four point three million. I would then do, if the project one oh one doesn't go, I would end up looking at that point, going back and look at re-appropriating those, those funds for, into either a rate stabilization. Or for making lease payments on this building until you get to that seven year mark, when you can eliminate your, your debt.
Would you like option three at all, with using that sale of that property, using that money outside to lower our fee for that, is that option three?
Or our lease payment.
Absolutely.
That appeals to me more.
That appeals to me, because we're going to, does it look like we're going to have a potential buyer?
Yes.
Is there a possibility of doing one and waiting till after the meeting with O C S D to determine how, how they're going to commit to the one oh one project on their side?
The only thing that I worry about is if we, if we have a five year period, that we're going to have to have like almost one point six million a year for, you know, to raise our fees. To save, you know, instead of five hundred thousand. You know, that's the only thing, if we do that, is that going to affect the rates?
You know, honestly, I was planning on seven years, that's why I'd like to wait and find out, you know, how committed they are to this. I truly believe that it sounds like the project's never going to go, because it's been thirty years already, but that's just me, twenty-five, yeah. We could, we could work out a funding plan for you and bring it back. Again, you know, financing this, this building at a lesser rate later on, it's just once we commit to the financing, we're locked for seven years.
And when does our final payment due?
For.
The purchase of Paulina. Was that soon?
They just did an extension.
Uh, they're going to get another extension here in the, in the thirty days, you should be coming.
Right, so they could have extension.
So we're looking at the end of May for closing now?
So anyone who's been meeting with the, with C.
The board could postpone an action on this, the appropriation was necessary, because I have already paid for the deposit on the building and some of the expenditures. You know, so I needed that appropriation, so I appreciate that, that wasn't a waste, and it's not committing you to anything.
Well, I think we talked in terms of, the reason for the financing was to let the repayers who were making use of this building pay for it over a extended period of time. And then, and so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of option two. Financing.
But I would be in favor of option three.
I am not, I, you know, I.
It's not as leveraged as.
I think the, the management at Orange County San District is queasy about, you know, queasy about this project, because, you know, it's, it's falling off the track. It's probably not an option. It's, it's just that they're going to have, where the industrial strength due, and they're going to try to sell it to that board. You know, and Jim and I will be there to support the project. This project got started twenty-five years ago, and we have, you know, a million dollars in the ground already. You know, and the only way I would hope that they get rid of that project is if they give us that million dollars back. And that's what I would build lobby for, is like save the thing going down.
Jim, how do you feel?
Well, I think we need to do our homework on this big time. We need to contact the people on the operations committee and educate them as to the importance of, of this whole project. And I, I have talked to several of them, but I need to talk to more of them. Because they'll make a recommendation to the main board, and hopefully it'll be a consent calendar item, but is, is that on the agenda for you maybe?
It's the operation.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, I.
But I, I think knowing the, the people on the operations committee, I'm on the administration committee, but I know all those, those people. And I think we've got a better than fifty fifty chance of ending up early, in my opinion.
Well, I think so.
With all the environmental, I keep waiting for the camera to drop from the environmental lawsuit, because you know, that one gal threatened against with that. And anyway.
It's very funny, it is what it is.
I know, I know, I know, I keep waiting to hear that. Take a look at option two again.
Do you have time to listen on the environmental challenge?
Okay, so the difference between option two and option three.
Yeah, there is.
Is nothing more than using the sale of this building to lower the financing amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's basically. Yeah, that's what I'm saying about it's basically you're going to finance but a million dollars less. If you go with option three.
Mark, in the big scheme of things, how much does that matter? How much is that going to make a difference in the payment?
It's about eighty thousand a year.
Eighty thousand a year?
So eighty, eighty plus what would be our payment?
It'd be, it would be eighty thousand, I mean, total cost would be eighty thousand plus the lost interest on the one point one for a little period of time.
So with option two, we would use that one point, or the sale of this building?
No.
No, I haven't finished my thought. We're using that again to make the lease payments. Or to pay for the tenant, the facilities improvements, if you think about it.
Yeah, it kind of works out the same.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, okay.
What, Mark, what is the total payment on a three thousand, or three million versus a four million?
Well, the three point two is about two hundred twenty-five thousand a year. This is twenty years and three and a half, which is the last quote that C S D A finance corp gave us. And four point three is about three hundred two thousand.
I, I, to me, it makes sense to go with option two to have the flexibility with that one point one. We spend that, or that whatever the sale of a building is, we've lost that money. I like the, I like the flexibility with option two myself.
I could, I could go with that.
Now, in the big scheme of things, option one is the most appealing to me because we pay for it, we're done with it, we never have to worry about it. And if project one oh one becomes a big monster in the next seven years, then we go back to finance corp, I mean, and finance it there. But I, I don't, I don't think I'm going to win with that one with the majority here. So I, I think I will favor option two.
Oh, the four hundred thousand that we put down for her money, how does that apply to, to number two?
And we would just be paying ourselves back. My preference then if option one is off the table would be option three to finance as little as possible and tighten our belts a little if we need to. You know, we've got a substantial amount of money set aside. We could, you know, draw that out a little for the one oh one if, since it's going to take longer. We're going to have to do some maintenance on those pump stations now that we're drawing them out. So I, you know, I'd like to be conservative and finance, you know, three hundred or three million and use the, the sale of the building to lower that so that we have less lease payments. And that's, you know, I'm just, I'm very conservative and I like to.
I agree, I agree with what you're saying.
We appreciate our finance manager is conservative. It's over seven years, about eighty thousand years.
It is.
I'd make a motion that we go with option three.
My second motion.
Jim, Jim, Moses, and David.
I, I.
People still, they might not get their jobs.
No, I didn't know.
I saw, I saw. You didn't fill out a card, but we're going to allow you to speak.
No, I did, I did fill out a card.
We're still in option two. I beg your pardon, sir.
Yeah, the general manager divided it into two parts.
I got you, I got you.
My comment on this part, first, I agree with the board members who spoke to the project one oh one money. Once it's been set aside for a capital improvement, the public expects it to remain dedicated for that unless that project actually is terminated. And I agree with, as you remarked, Davis's comment that if that project should be terminated, the primary thought should be, since that was collected upon behalf of sewer taxpayers, that it go back towards a rate adjustment sometime. So I would favor option two or option three. But all three options, I have a similar comment. They all assume that the fixture fees, which as I understand from the staff report, is something that's specifically collected to support the sewer operation, would be used towards the financing of the new building. And as I wanted to point out, this is both a sewer district and a trash district. Now, we usually have some kind of formula for allocating how much of the administrative costs are related to the two functions. And all, and all of these proposals as a sewer but not trash rate payer, I am concerned that how the equity is eventually going to be achieved if money that was collected on behalf of the sewer district is being used for the financing of this. Is, is some correction going to be made somewhere along the line? If the sewer fixture fees, which are part of option two or three, were collected specifically for the sewer, they don't support the trash operation at all. And I would think some credit somehow has to be made back to the sewer fund if it's going to be used for this purpose rather than for sewer purpose. Thank you.
No, you're not asking? Okay. Yes, that's, it becomes an asset of the wastewater fund. And so in, like selling this building, all this asset goes back to the wastewater fund. That's true. Staff has talked to the general manager about potentially charging rent to the trash fund. If we're making a lease payment, it may be a split lease payment that goes towards that as well, in a sense, rent. So, yeah, and staff hasn't, since we adopted a budget already for the next year, we'll be having to bring that back to the board because it's not included in the trash budget. Having said that though, a significant amount of, you know, we are trash as a contractor and everybody here, you know, is essentially working, you know, the majority of the time on sewer and stuff. So it's a very small amount.
Is it always a split of fifty-fifty or, I thought we had a different percentage?
No, it's actually ten percent to the sewer solid waste fund and ninety percent to the.
So our payment back would be based on the ten percent.
Yeah, staff would have to look at it, but generally speaking, that's what we've determined is necessary.
That's what I thought.
Madam, quick, where are we in the discussion?
I have a vote. I'm sorry, not a vote. I have a motion by Director Bunn to approve option three.
No, I have a second.
Correct.
Can we talk to that a little more?
Sure. Please, open the discussion.
I, I just wonder, you know, to me, I was sold on option two. You know, I want some kind of leverage to think why I want option three, which you're making a motion on against the two, which to me made better sense.
You're not, one of the reasons is you're not as leveraged. You know, you're saving eighty thousand theoretically a year on servicing that part of it.
You know, for four, seven years because I saw that payment and we were saying, seven times eight.
Wendy was saying that we're going to have demands, other demands created by what this action, that we're going to have to pay attention to, you know, physically.
One of the, hypothetically, he's saying that one point one would essentially be four years of lease payments. But the way I look at it is, we've got, you know, three point eight million sitting in cash for a project that's now five years away. If I take that extra one point one million and put it in a reserve to make lease payments over the next four years, I've got another one point one million in cash sitting there. I am sitting on a ton of cash. I know people all over the special districts and cities would be like, woo-hoo, we've got so much cash. But I, I just feel that it's not prudent to sit on that much cash and that the ratepayers would like to see it utilized. To me, like even one oh one is just an appropriation. It's a budget of projects. We change our mind all the time about what projects we can get done and not. And the same thing with this, with the lease payment, with all that money sitting there, I just, you know, we're talking about five million dollars for, you know, sometime in the future, you know, four years over for the lease payments and, you know, it's a lot of money to sit on. I would like to see it less debt and kind of more living within our means, you know, in the sense of we budget the lease payments every year and, and balance our budget that way.
So option three makes better sense to you?
It's, it's my favorite.
Plus of this.
Right.
Well, along those lines, Wendy, I think the, what we can do for the taxpayers if we, if we fund most of this with the loan is we can decrease what we've been asking them to pay so that any future increases in fees in the sewer fund to pay for that project won't have to come nearly as quickly. I mean, we're, we're putting one point seven five million a year in those funds, one point two five, one point seven five, I forget which, right now. We don't have to pay that much if we stretch that by over five more years. I mean, we can drop that down and we can do the C I P projects and we can, you know, we can do all kinds of things. And we don't have to raise sewer fees nearly as quickly.
And I agree with that. And I would be all over that if we were even somewhere in the upper range of sewer rates within the county. But we are so low, I would hate to see us go lower and then have to, at some point, be in the future.
I'm not saying lower. Yeah, I'm not saying lower. We're still going to have to accumulate three and a half million dollars over, well, over five more years. We're between now, you know, over seven or eight years rather than over two, two or three years. So I mean, we're still going to have to charge him for this, charge him for that. And we, and we just made decisions on C I P projects because we thought we were tight for money. So we can reevaluate how fast we go with the C I P projects.
Well, the C, the C I P projects were realigned not because we were tight for money. We were, again, sitting on a lot of money that we couldn't get the projects done. So we, we reallocated the money to focus on projects we wanted done and could get done. So it's kind of that, you know, we have to live within the means of what we can get accomplished. It's, I feel like bad cop, good cop here.
Hey, Mark, I put him in a bad spot.
But you referred to him as he a little bit.
That man.
The day of the time.
Okay, but anyway, you know, it's just my preference. I would, you know, I, I know how you all feel about our rates and where we are in the rates for the sewer and, and stuff. So I know that that's, you know, you're all up to speed on that, but that would just.
Plus, if we have a loan longer than seven years, when you say eighty thousand dollars a year, times the length of the loan. So that's a significant amount. So that's why I left option three.
Well, thank you. I appreciate talking about it.
So we're here for it. Okay, so then consensus is to go with option three? I'm sorry, consensus. This is worse than buying a house with my wife. We have a motion in second to go with option three. Further discussion, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Board Director. Do you have a few more recommendations for you to consider?
I, I'm just looking through the list. We've taken care of one and two.
One, two, and you can actually take care of one, two, and three.
And three, that's.
Yes, so, so no, if you can get the, I'm sorry, can we have one more time? So, so three is taken care of. So actually, and four, four is a moot point because, you know, we're not going to use one oh one for the funding. So, well, recommendation number five, and, and that is to approve waiving bidding procedures and authorize the general manager to enter an agreement with Transitions for less than forty-one thousand dollars for project management services. So let me again, go a little about Transitions and if you'd like, I can have Chris Tucker come up and talk about, about their company. But anyways, as I mentioned, we got to know Chris and Mary through the gotcha and the fixture and furniture and expense budget. And what really impressed me about their, their company is their, their, their network, their, their wealth of network of vendors that do this kind of work and their experience of relocating businesses and doing tenant improvements. I'm really confident that, you know, doing this type of, moving to the new building, it's a lot of work. You know, we have to, we have to go out to bid for the engineering designs. We have to go out to bid for constructions. We have to manage the construction contract. We have to do the moving, all the boxes and all this stuff. It's a lot of work. Having Transitions do that for us, let staff focus on other areas that you want us to work on. On the board behind you is a timeline that they put together. It's also in the packet that if, if we have Transitions do all that for us, we can, we can get into the building by, by the first week of November.
Move it, Mark.
Well, I have a question first, once. Can we legally do that, Alan, approve the waiving of the bidding process?
I was just going to ask. Apologize, I had the flu Friday. I didn't get a chance to focus on the agenda as well as I would have liked to. Is, are they considered professional?
Yes.
What, what would their professional qualifications be?
Professional as.
Are they engineers or architects or?
No, no, like they're, no, no, they're, I know, what did you call it?
Consultants in project management and design.
Is there a degree involved?
Certified project management?
Certified project management. So I think otherwise the board would probably want to make a finding that this is the district's best interest to go with them. Because generally you would take the lowest bid unless there's, and I guess maybe Scott would be arguing that this is like a value judgment.
Yes, it's not a construction project. So this is not, this is consulting services. So we don't have to follow the public works contract code.
Yeah, you're right.
So this is a, but when we go, when we do the bidding for the construction of the TIs, then we would go a little bit. But this is consulting services. So technically, we don't have to and because it's over. Over the five thousand dollars, I can't approve it because it's over five thousand dollars. That's why I'm asking you, the board, to waive the bidding procedures.
I think that's accurate.
The, in the essence of the time management that we've got and the need to get this moving, a bid process is going to take us sixty days.
And they're going to follow our procedures for bidding process. So they're still following our procedures, but they're going to be managing it for us in the best interest to get this.
What do they base their fee on? The amount of contracts that they're managing for us?
I'd be happy to answer that. Do you want me to stand up?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Wendy would like to record you.
And they have to explain about your company and what you do.
And another question is, is part of that too, is you said they're going to be awarding some contract?
No, we're going to be awarding it, but they're, yeah, we're going to be awarding, but they're going to make recommendations for us. Yes, we're awarding it.
So thanks for having us. And Transitions, I started in nineteen eighty-six, designed to help save companies time and costs associated with going through the process. We don't charge based on how much you spend or who you do business with, to answer your question directly. We do it based on size, scope, and duration. And so in this particular scope of work, we've offered two proposals. One, which is fairly unique. We have the experience and the skill sets to manage and design and procure phone, security, catering, audio, visual, and coordinate the move. The second scope of work is the construction management, which includes the competitive interviewing and bidding of the architectural and engineering services as well as the public bid services for construction and managing all the construction. So at the turn of every hand, we're looking for ways to add value to your organization for saving money where it makes sense. We offered some of the suggestions and cost-cutting alternatives came from our experience and our objectivity. So we're only compensated by you guys and each one of those services that we bundled together created a package. So we offered a ten percent discount on each one of those packages to be more competitive, recognizing this is an agency and you have stewardship responsibilities to the community. And Scott asked me if there was anything else I could do. And I said, if we do get both services because of the economies of scale, we'd offer another five percent discount. So we're interested in making sure we get it right. We'll free up about seventy-five to eighty percent of the staff's time. They'll offer authorizations and provide critical feedback. The gotcha covered that we trademarked and did early on the process gives us the agenda that you guys had. So we're taking notes today, Mary Bradley and I, and making sure that we understand what your priorities are and come back with recommendations throughout that process and support those goals and objectives.
Any questions from Chris? Just make sure the guy is in front of the thing.
That's not what I heard. That's what I saw in the notes.
Have a sign saying Big Brother on the top.
Yeah, that's right. That's Mike's answer.
I know.
I think we'd be favored if he was a bunch of freaks.
He sits on boxes. Do you have a question, Andy?
No.
Thank you for the question.
Great, thank you.
We do have a motion to move forward with, with the contract second.
Need to waive the.
The bidding process. Second, we have a motion to second any other discussion. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Ms. President. I do have one more recommendation from.
Two more.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the next one is, as you know, our generator right here, Richard generator at the building. We have a commission we use with the city. One of the conditions is that if we ever vacate this building, we have to take that generator with us. I don't want to take, I don't want to use it at Pollerino only because one, it's not big enough and two, I don't want to take up any space, it's parking space. So the option, next option is have it as a backup for one of our pump stations. And the one we selected was Geesler only because, for a couple of reasons. One, as you know, it's one of our smaller pump stations. It's two hundred fifty gallons per minute. Not one of the oldest ones, but it's getting up there. But also, as you see in this, in this picture, it's, I think it's a really good location. So here, here's, this is Iowa. This is, this is Geesler. This is Mesa Verde Golf Course. Pump station's right here. The proposal was, we put the generator right here. The, the proposal was we put, uh, the generator right here and then we just trench, uh, hook it up underground through the street. This is ideal because nowhere near any homes, it's next to the golf course, nothing over here. Uh, the reason why we're asking a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars is because it's more like a block, um, a block building around it. Uh, for one, for protecting the equipments for any kind of vandalism, and two, for aesthetic reasons. Um, so we still have to go through this, all, all of that process. That's an estimate that I, I got from Rob Hamers. So, um, if, if you're, um, okay with that, then the recommendation is to appropriate seven thousand dollars from the CIP budget for relocating generator to Geesler.
Is that only city? The easement's only gonna be through the city or through Mesa Verde?
Uh, it moves to the city, to the city. Rob's been doing his research, I think it's with the city. Yes.
So it's not a Mesa Verde property?
No, no, no.
I, I, we probably just push back on that, but...
It's not even, it's, it's, you know, that's outside that fence, and you're, it's, it's all those trees, and I can see it.
There's that little, there's a little...
Yeah, we gotta keep it away from that, too. We have to keep it away.
Um, why is, that, that generator came here for a reason?
Mm-hmm.
For support the, um, you know, the, the twenty pump, the, um, the telemetry fund of twenty pump stations.
Uh, it was backup for this and also for, uh, for an EOC, for an EOC purposes.
So why isn't that important? It's a new building.
Because remember I told you we were gonna use UPS instead? We have the UPS that's gonna provide us, the UPS unraveled power system's gonna provide, there's a power outage at, at the new building, the UPS system will give us three hours to bring a mobile generator to hook up to the building.
Why wasn't that considered here? I mean, UPS doesn't cost anything, it's, you know, they're extraordinarily, you know, high maintenance and, you know, they fail often. But, and then that's what happened to us at the pump station, you know, it failed, I think for Edison reasons, but, you know, we've got half a million dollars in that generator. Um, I think probably the best thing that we can do, um, it's just a shame.
I have a question. Aren't we thinking about putting the ride iron fences for the car?
No, that's one of the cuts, so it's one of the cuts.
Yeah, right there, yeah, yeah.
Well, we'd have to build a block and put, you know, one of the thing over there, so the, you know, staff could have lunch.
I thought the same thing. Or we could use it for, for something, but...
I, I think, you know, again, with, uh, president, with, I think staff would appreciate having it at, at, at Geesler. Um, again, it's just another, um, if power goes out, it saves us time, saves overtime since, um, transporting a mobile generator there, it's, it's, uh, in our opinion, the right thing to do. Um, the, the cost, again, the cost, hopefully get that cost down. The, um, the enclosures we did on... The goblin pumps, that's a prefab building, it seems to save a little money because they, they, they build it elsewhere than they just pop it down rather than putting up masonry. Maybe we could save some money doing that way. But what, what estimate here is just a regular block wall, traditional block wall.
That Rob recommended.
Yes, yeah, yes. You know, something similar like the, um, the enclosure or Twenty-third Street. You could, if you were picturing that, something like that, yeah.
Move it for a moment.
Okay. Do we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
I'd go some of that CIP money.
Thank you. And the last, last recommendation, Mr. President, Board Directors, is assuming, uh, what the OCSD's operations committee decides in the May, if they decide not to approve the project, then our, our recommendation is to come back in the study session and, and give us some direction on what you wanna do with the project one-on-one funding.
Staff is gonna come back anyway, um, not just for one-on-one funding, because it will change, but we're also looking at the grade fives, um, starting immediately. And so we need to kind of factor that in as well. And so one of the things that we were looking at was reallocating money. So we'll be coming back to you for some amendments for the New Year's budget, too.
Do you have any information?
No, no, it's just a direction.
It's a workflow that we bring back.
Do you have any information on how, how far into the CCTV now is it?
I don't know how many, I, I know, um, I think last week we updated, uh, initially, we're, we're trying to be proactive rather than waiting till all get done and come back and view how many grade fives and get a budget.
I appreciate that, I just, you know...
Yeah, like, there's like three that we started on.
We did eighteen, we, we went up to bid and we're gonna do eighteen grade fives from this recent CCTV.
So, but you don't know whether we're ten percent...
No, I don't.
I think they're like twenty percent, I wanna say, because we paid a, we paid a bill of seventy thousand dollars. Uh, I don't remember what the total budget was.
So twenty percent of generated eighteen grade fives?
Yeah, maybe it is ten percent if that's, what was the total budget for the...
It was like three hundred thousand, huh?
I was thinking it was...
Three seventy-five.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, that's like twenty percent.
Yes, we think so, yes.
There's a place article about it, one of these, one of those.
Yeah. Okay. And that's, that's it, no, I... No more comments, is there, we're going to close, close session, talk about the...
At this point, I'm going to, we have some questions?
Uh, we just have a point out that, um, Jim Hawkins from Lean Associates is here. He represents the first offer that we received, so I don't know if you wanna do, you, we're gonna talk about the offers in closed session?
Yes.
Okay. Can we, can Jim, Jim, did you wanna talk about your, your buyer, or is that appropriate?
Not yet.
Not in closed session, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is it appropriate here?
Mr. Mosher, I'm gonna ask the board if it's okay for Mr. Mosher to speak.
You betcha.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't...
It's okay, I just...
Number three. You're about to go into a session, you have a conference with...
You're saying this, but not yet.
Welcome to shape.
Mr. Ferris about...
Whoa, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry to come...
Go ahead, go ahead. You, there you go.
Yeah, this is a comment for your benefit about what I guess you're gonna be discussing in closed sessions, it's, it doesn't happen, isn't privy to those discussions. Uh, but I gathered the, the closed session, as you're about to announce, is gonna be about the negotiation, about the sale of this property. I gathered from the previous staff report that the offers, and apparently there are three of them, it's listed here in the agenda, that the amount that you might realize from this building is apparently a little disappointing. One point one million, we, we heard was a very conservative estimate, maybe you're hoping to get more. I, I'm just guessing from that that perhaps the three people who are bidding on this property are mostly wanting the lot and not wanting the building that is here. If that were the case, if they thought that this building has to be torn down or extensively improved and therefore cannot offer a great deal for it, I would think it'd be wise for the board to wait until you find somebody who finds considerable value in the building that is already here. I don't know if the comment is appropriate, because I don't know what the bids are, what you're discussing, I don't know. Yes.
But I agree with you, one, one point one, I agree.
Yeah, it, it looks like a building that should be useful to somebody who's present in...
I know, I know.
And maybe it might take some time to find that person who, who would find value in improvements that are here. Thank you.
Now, um, Jack?
Okay, Jim Hawkins from Lean Associates is here. He represented one of the buyers that we received an offer from, and he came to the meeting just to make sure that if we had any questions about his offer, that he was here to answer them and, uh, kinda just put, did you wanna talk to, about your buyer and their flexibility, or is there anything that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I think until we have a chance to talk in closed session about the, I don't, without the, and without the other parties here...
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that, you know, I think, I think the other board members feel the same way. Apologize for having to put up with all the other stuff this morning, but, you know...
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. We may wanna speak to you in the future, but it's a premature...
And, Mr. President, if he wanted to make a comment to the board before, without any feedback backwards, that would be okay in open session?
Absolutely, if you'd like to make any comments now, not expecting any feedback, we'll be more than happy to let you with your comments.
I, I think Jack can represent it, we've, we've had conversations with him, um, so he, he knows who our buyer is and what their intent is and what their use would be, so...
Okay. Well, thank you for putting up with the government process.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay, but at this time, I'm gonna adjourn our open session to closed session regarding negotiations, conference with the real property negotiator. Can we, can we take a five-minute break? Of course. How can we take a five-minute break?
Um, I don't know, you should ask the... You need more?
What's that? No, yeah, why don't you say?
I didn't want to... Sounds funny.
Um, I'm going to close the closed session and reopen the open session.